All right, today is January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, it is five oh two P M. We are here in council chambers at one oh one five Cultural Park Boulevard, and I am calling this meeting to order. We will start with a moment of silence, please. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ataseli.
President.
Jackson.
President.
Kaitin.
President.
Kilrain.
President.
Michaels.
President.
Manaya.
President.
Santos.
President.
Parent representatives. Hogland. O H S. Absent. Shade. O M S.
President.
Soto. O E S. Absent. Rousseau. O E N. Absent.
All right, looks like we're all accounted for. I'm going to remind everybody to please use your microphones tonight so that the audience at home can hear us. That brings us to our reorganization. So each year, the Board reorganizes and chooses a Chair and a Vice Chair to lead the Board. So that being said, the way that this works is we will nominate members. We don't need a second for nominations, so you can nominate who you choose. After nominations are done, we will then need a motion to close nominations, and from there, we will go ahead and we will vote on our decisions for the Chair, and then we will move along in the process and do the same thing for the Vice Chair. So that being said, I'm going to go ahead and open up the nominations for the Chair position. So anybody that would like to make a nomination, please feel free.
I'd like to nominate Chair Chris.
Thank you. And I also want to preface this by, if you are nominated, you can also tell us if you would like to accept the nomination or decline the nomination as well. And I would humbly accept this nomination, thank you, sir. Do we have any other nominations for Chair position? All right. Seeing none, I think we can move along just to vote to close nominations. Do we have a motion to close the nominations?
Show moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, nominations are closed. So typically, this is where we would go to the vote of it, which we can go right to have a roll call vote for posterity and a uniform vote where everybody votes on the same page. So Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ataseli.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Kaitin.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Michaels.
Aye.
Manaya.
Aye.
Santos.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody. I do appreciate it, and I have something to say a little bit later in my report, so thank you so much. So we'll move along to the same exact nominating process, and we will do this for the Vice Chair position. So I will go ahead and open up the nominations for Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Karen Michaels.
Second.
Do we have any other? First, Ms. Michaels, would you care to accept?
Yeah, I accept the nomination, thank you.
Great. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, again, I think we can skip the formalities and go straight to a motion to close the nominations. So do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, looks like we have a second to close, so Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ataseli.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Kaitin.
Aye.
Kilrain.
Aye.
Michaels.
Aye.
Manaya.
Aye.
Santos.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I think that was one of the easiest that we've had. That was a great reorganization. Now we are going to move on to approval of the minutes. I will nominate, or I will look for a request for approval of the minutes of the executive Shade meeting that took place on December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Show moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, we're looking for item B, request for approval of the minutes of the regular governing board meeting that took place on December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Show moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B carries. Next, we have item six, changes to the agenda and/or adoption of the agenda, request for approval of the agenda of the regular governing board meeting, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along, we're going to move to citizens' input. We have a maximum of forty-five minutes. It's set for input of the citizens on matters concerning the charter school authority governing board, three minutes per individual. I will now open this time up for citizens' input time. If you are interested, please step up to the podium. Anybody wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close citizens' input. Moving along to consent agenda. Looking for a request to approve consent agenda.
Show moved.
We're going to do as presented A and B. Ms. Collins, is there anything that you wish to discuss on A or B?
No, the bus purchases on our schedule of bus purchases coming up, and we are required to report teachers that are out of field twice a year, sadly forced during COVID, and we're trying to find teachers.
I know everybody read all seven hundred and twenty pages of what takes place for the procurement of the buses. So that being said, a motion for the consent agenda as presented A through B.
Show moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's going to bring us to item nine, unfinished business. We have Evergreen Solutions LLC report for the City of Cape Coral Charter School Authority for the employee classifications and compensation study.
Good evening, Board. Jackie Collins, Superintendent. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Ally Crumpler. She is our contact person that we've been working with since August last fall to develop our classification and compensation study. So I'm going to turn it over to her. She's going to give us tonight a high-level presentation that will just kind of give you an overview of where we are and what the study has encompassed. I want to remind everyone that we will be having a workshop later in January on the twenty-seventh to really dive deeper into these numbers and what exactly they mean per category. But Evergreen has done a pretty extensive study interviewing a lot of our staff and collecting a lot of very good, highly important information to formulate this study, so I'm going to turn it over to Ally, who will be able to answer questions at the end. Very good, thank you.
So as mentioned, my name is Ally Crumpler, Senior Consultant with Evergreen Solutions. Very excited to present the results of our classification and compensation study to you all today. Okay, so to provide an overview of what we'll discuss tonight, so we'll talk about the study goals, so why do a classification and compensation study? We'll talk about the project phases, what Evergreen has been doing behind the scenes during this time, and then our subsequent recommendations that we're making to Oasis Charter Schools as a result of our analysis. So why do a classification and compensation study? I'm sure you're all well aware that your most valuable resource and your greatest asset are your employees, and we want to make sure that you're in a position to recruit and retain your top-tier talent. So doing a classification and compensation study can help to make sure that you're maintaining those checks, can help to improve employee morale, help to improve your organizational culture, and then also make sure that you're creating and maintaining a healthy budget. For this study specifically, our goals were to review the current compensation system that is in place within Oasis Charter Schools to check your internal equity. We also surveyed peer organizations to check the external equity of your positions, and then we combined those two to produce recommendations to provide Oasis Charter System with a system that would be equitable both internally and externally. For this study, we did our kickoff meeting way back on July first of last year, and at that time, we requested quite a bit of data from your H R team. We requested the employee database, which included the information for all employees that were included within the study, the job descriptions for each of those positions, your organizational charts, so we could review the internal hierarchy of those positions, and then any personnel policies and procedures related to classification and compensation. Once we received that information, we were able to complete what's called your assessment of current conditions, or your A O C C, and this really gives us an idea of what the current system is that is in place within Oasis Charter Schools and gives us areas to pinpoint in our analysis moving forward. So looking at the structure, the word I would use would be inconsistent. So the current system is managed according to individual classifications or individual positions. So instead of individual pay grades or numbered pay grades, your pay ranges are currently managed according to your positions, so managed by bus driver, teacher, et cetera. Overall, these do represent three hundred and thirty-nine Oasis employees. Overall, there are inconsistent range spreads across these positions, so a range spread is the distance from your minimum starting salary to your maximum earning salary, and how much room employees have to move in between. So currently, your range spreads vary from zero percent, so it's a flat rate for that position, all the way to fifty-seven percent, which translates to inconsistent earning potential across your different positions. Additionally, there is no evidence for progression system for promotion, so since your pay ranges are managed according to individual classifications, there's no evidence of a way that employees could progress as they move through the system. If we look at salary distribution and where employees are placed within their salary ranges, approximately seventy percent of your employees are earning below the midpoint of his or her published pay range. But if we look at tenure in relation to quartiles, so breaking those salary ranges into four equal parts, your tenure does increase throughout the quartiles, which does suggest there is some correlation between what employees are being paid and their length of tenure with Oasis Charter Schools. However, tenure does decrease from Quartile Three to Quartile Four, so that suggests to us that there may be some compression occurring between newly hired and more tenured employees. If we were to break this down even further to look at your quartile analysis, so again, breaking those salary ranges into four equal parts, looking at where your employees are concentrated within those quartiles, you can see that your largest concentration of employees is in Quartile One, or the first twenty-five percent of their pay range. The second largest would be Quartile Four. So again, with that largest concentration, this suggests to us that Oasis Charter Schools has recently expanded with many new hires. You've had a lot of turnover recently, also suggests to us that there's likely some compression occurring between newly hired and more tenured employees. Once we completed our assessment of current conditions, we moved into our employee outreach phase of the study. So we were able to complete virtual interviews and focus groups with your employees in September of this year. We also released an online outreach survey to all employees at that same time and received over a hundred and eighty-five responses, so roughly receiving fifty percent completion or so with the employees that were included within the study. We did ask employees to share why they came to work for Oasis Charter Schools, as well as why they remain working here. So as you can see, the biggest driver was often location, so many employees shared that they are members of the local community. They also enjoy having the opportunity to make a positive impact on their local community and where they live. Many employees share that they enjoy the type of work that they do, specifically the opportunity to work with children. And then many employees share that they enjoy their coworkers and their work environment, specifically at their local school sites. Many of them share that it is a family environment, and they enjoy coming to work, which is great.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure.
Is that in a chronological order that you put those?
Yes.
Okay.
So when asked about compensation concerns, approximately thirty-six percent of our outreach participants shared that they have little to no understanding of Oasis's current pay plan structure, so additional transparency and clarification was requested. And a large majority of participants, roughly eighty-eight percent, felt that Oasis Charter Schools' current salaries are not competitive with surrounding organizations. The average satisfaction level in relation to base compensation was two point eight seven on a scale of one to ten, with one being the lowest level of satisfaction and ten being the highest. Additionally, more than half of participants felt that raises, incentives, and pay grade assignments are not fair or equitable between employees and/or departments. Additionally, staff were vocal about compression between newly hired and more tenured employees, which we also noted may be occurring within the assessment of current conditions, so your employees shared that they do feel that that is occurring within the current structure.
Was it okay to? Chris, did you want to interrupt for questions or just continue?
How would our speaker like to proceed on that? Would you prefer?
However you'd like.
Is it okay if we?
Sure.
In between, or would you like to go through the process?
You can stop me, feel free.
Thank you very much for that.
Sure.
Yeah, if I might ask, the eighty-seven point eight percent of dissatisfied, that seems pretty high. What's that as compared to other surveys that you?
Well, I wouldn't say dissatisfaction necessarily, but they're just stating that within your surrounding school districts that some of your salaries are not competitive.
Yeah. How does that compare with other districts that you have surveyed?
I would say that that is a pretty high percentage.
Okay.
Yes. We also asked employees to share what they felt Oasis Charter Schools should do in order to be more competitive with the local market. So as shown there in blue, roughly ninety-one percent of survey respondents felt that Oasis Charter Schools needs to adjust salaries to account for the local cost of living. Other top responses included to increase the pay of employees in general, which was selected by roughly ninety percent of respondents, shown there in red, and to increase the pay grade ranges, so that that minimum starting salary and the maximum earning salary, which was selected by seventy-two percent of respondents. All the way on the right, you do see a small blue line there that is showing two survey respondents, or roughly one percent of employees, indicated that Oasis compensation is already at or above the market rate for his or her position. So do you have some employees that feel that they are being compensated at the market rate?
That's a pretty small line.
Yeah, but there are a few. We also asked employees to share their concerns in relation to the current classification system that is in place within Oasis Charter Schools. So employees shared that some classification titles or position titles are very generic and do not accurately describe the position or the roles and responsibilities that are being performed. Employees shared that some job descriptions are outdated and do not include all of those roles and responsibilities. And then additionally, many employees requested additional support positions to help teachers with their workloads. So specifically, support was requested in terms of learning strategies, curriculum, and differentiated instruction to help those teachers in the classroom. Overall, the top three issues that employees would like to see Oasis Charter Schools address would be competitive compensation with market peers, adjusting compensation or pay to account for the local cost of living, and then adding additional career ladders for employees to allow for promotional opportunities and career growth. Once we completed the outreach portion of our study, we moved into the Job Assessment Tool, or the J A T, portion of our study. This was released at the end of September of last year, and what this is is basically our version of a desk audit. So we ask all of your employees to provide information on what they do when they come to work every day. So this allows us to review that internal hierarchy that is in place for your position and make sure that positions are being slotted appropriately into a pay plan based on their roles, responsibilities, and risk that it carries for the organization. We also ask employees to score themselves based on five compensatory factors. Those would be leadership, working conditions, complexity, decision-making, and relationships. This information does go through multiple verification steps, so once employees provide their input, we did ask supervisors to review that information. Evergreen then reviewed that, and then we forwarded on to your leadership team so they could review that as well. Overall, this portion of the study received roughly sixty percent completion for employees, roughly fifty-nine percent completion for supervisors, and represented roughly ninety percent of the classifications or positions that were included within the study. Concurrently with our job assessment tool, we did complete your market salary survey. So we requested market information from peers around you, so seven peers that are shown on the left-hand side. These peers were identified as ones that are close in proximity to Oasis Charter Schools and may represent ones that you compete with for quality employees, or they may have a similar structure, size, or offerings to that of Oasis Charter Schools. We did also, since we were looking at a rather small sample size, we did also include some supplementary data from the Economic Research Institute to support those market findings as well. Those are listed on the right-hand side of the screen. For this salary survey, we did use forty-three classifications or positions as our benchmarks, and for that, we are looking at the roles and responsibilities of the position and not just the job title, since it may be called something different in another area. Based on that analysis, we were able to collect over five hundred data points, and the results were finalized in October of last year. So if we were to look at your market comparison at the fiftieth percentile, so thinking in terms of a bell curve, that fiftieth percentile would put you right in the middle of that curve, so half of your peers would be paying less than you, half of your peers would be paying more than you. So Oasis Charter Schools' minimum starting salaries are roughly ten point four percent below that of their market peers. At the midpoint, roughly six point seven percent below. And then the maximum, so the maximum salaries for Oasis Charter Schools are roughly three percent below that of your market peers. So this data is with that E R I, the supplementary data included. If we were to take the E R I data out and only look at those seven peers that are directly around you, Oasis Charter Schools is roughly fourteen point eight percent below that of its market peers at the midpoint. Okay, so taking all of this into consideration, all of this information, you know, looking at what we would recommend as far as a salary plan moving forward, we want to make sure that we are allowing for flexibility to meet future needs for Oasis Charter Schools, but also something that is going to be fiscally sustainable both now and in the future. For this, Evergreen is recommending three pay plans that would be consistent in design, would allow for employees to move within their pay grades horizontally, so their movement within their pay range, as well as for consistent progression as they promote within Oasis Charter Schools. For this, we are recommending basing plans at the fiftieth percentile for a more competitive stance in your local market. This is the proposed pay plan for your instructional employees. So you can see here that we are proposing seven pay grades, a consistent range spread of forty percent. Again, that forty percent is a distance from your minimum starting salary to your maximum earning salary, and then a consistent grade progression, so a distance from one pay grade to the next of five percent. We're recommending a starting salary for teachers at thirty-five oh nine an hour, or fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty cents, based on a fifteen, twenty hours annual. This is the same starting salary as your current scale, but what we're recommending the focus be on widening your range spreads and allowing for more earning potential. So currently, your range spreads for your teaching scale is at ten percent, so there's a ten percent earnings potential from their minimum starting salary to their maximum earnings salary. So we're recommending that is where you place your focus for your instructional staff. Best practice within H R is between fifty to seventy percent range spreads, so the recommendation is to increase that as much as possible for now, and then to continue to increase that range spread or that earning potential as budget allows. So while best practice is fifty to seventy percent, smaller organizations do tend to err between forty to sixty percent. This is the recommended plan for your support employees, so you can see that we're recommending fifteen pay grades here, again, a consistent range spread of forty percent, and then a standard midpoint progression of six percent. Minimum starting salary for support staff we're recommending at fifteen dollars an The third pay plan that we're suggesting is for your administrative employees, so this would be school administrators and above. Again, five pay grades, consistent range spread, again, of forty percent, and then a midpoint progression of seven and a half percent between each pay grade. Okay, so once we talk about the suggested plans, now we need to talk about how we move employees into those new plans. So based on the conversations that we had with your employees and the overwhelming response that we got that you are dealing with compression, we felt that it was appropriate to provide parity-based options to you. So parity-based option realigns employees based on time, and there's a few different ways that we can do that. The first option is bring to new minimum, which is exactly as it sounds. So bring to new minimum brings all employees to the new minimum of their pay grade, and then no additional adjustments would be made. We do not recommend this unless this is the only option that you can afford, and really, we only show this because this is the basis of all of the other options that we show you. It is the cheapest, so if that is all that Oasis Charter Schools can afford, we would recommend that you at least start there, but that is not what we would recommend for you moving forward. Otherwise, I'll walk you through the three parity options. I'm going to start with the bottom first. So tenure-based parity is realigning employees based on their total amount of tenure with Oasis Charter Schools. This is done on a thirty-year career basis, so if an employee has been with Oasis for fifteen years, they would be placed at the midpoint. If the employee is already making above, where the model would suggest that they would be placed, no additional adjustment would be made. For a class-based parity is a similar approach, but for class-based parity, we're looking at their time in their current classification, so not their total amount of time with Oasis, but just their most recent positions, if they've received a promotion, just that current one, and then again, realigning based on a thirty-year career. And then a hybrid parity, exactly as it sounds, is a hybrid of the two. So it is again, realigning employees, but they're getting full credit for their time in their current classification and then half time, or half credit for their total amount of time with Oasis. So this is giving credit for time in their current position, but also rewarding your long-tenured employees. So there are costs associated with each of these implementation options. So again, bring to new minimum, and keep in mind, these are salary-only costs, so these do not include any benefit markup, supplements, things of that nature. Again, bring to new minimum is going to be your cheapest cost, roughly four hundred and seventy-three thousand, with an average percentage adjustment of five point eight percent to an employee's base salary. Tenure-based parity is going to be your most expensive option, roughly one point four two million, with an average percentage adjustment of fifteen percent. If we looked at class years, the budget estimate would be roughly one point two eight million, or roughly. If we looked at class years, the budget estimate would be roughly $1.28 million, or roughly 12% adjustment. Hybrid years would be right in the middle of those two, roughly $1.3 million, or an average 12.2%. I did want to add that this includes a 1% adjustment for all employees. So as I mentioned, if employees would not be adjusted because they're already making above where the model would anticipate they would be, they would still receive at least a 1% adjustment with these estimated costs.
Have we...
Sure.
The finance team met with the administration and spent quite a lot of time reviewing the state of the board. Our recommendation is that the implementation cost is a class parity. So if you were focused on that line, we felt that that was the most affordable, not the least, or relatively in the middle. And I want to bring your attention to the average percent adjustment is an average of 12.1%. So if anybody to think that they're going to walk away with 12% of their salaries, this is one of the plus, some of the more, and where they fall, not pretty to write.
In today's environment with tenure, do you only look at their current class, or do you look at their total tenure despite what classification they might be in with the charter system?
Total tenure was...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the issue with looking solely at tenure is it may overinflate a position or someone that has recently been promoted. You know, if they've been with Oasis for 20 years and then just received a promotion last year, it would attempt to move them through, you know, a pay range that may not be the most pertinent.
Did we, do we have anybody that fits into that 1% range that's already making?
We do, yeah. I do have some examples here. These are all instructional staff, just to look at how they would move through these different implementation options. So employee A has been overall tenure with Oasis roughly 13 years, but class tenure about 12 years. So they did receive a promotion at some point. Current hourly rate is $34.46. So with the bring-to-new minimum, they would be brought to the new minimum of that pay grade at $35.09. If we adjusted them based on tenure years, they would be adjusted to 41.07. If we adjusted based on that class year, they would be brought to $40.67. And then hybrid years, a combination, or right in the middle of the two, $40.87. Employee B has been with Oasis Charter Schools for 3.92 years, roughly four years, and has been in the same position for that entire time. So their current hourly rate is $35.39. Since they are already making above the new minimum of the pay grade, that bring-to-new minimum reflects that 1% adjustment that they would receive. And then you can see that their tenure class and hybrid years would all be the same, since their overall tenure and their class tenure is the same. So they would be brought to $36.92, no matter what option that you chose. Employee C is also similar. They have a much longer tenure with Oasis Charter Schools, almost 20 years, but they have been in that same position for the entire 20-year tenure. Their current hourly rate is $39.91. Again, since they're already making above the new minimum, they would not receive an adjustment except for the 1% adjustment that we added in. So they would be brought to $40.31. However, if we adjusted based on their tenure class and hybrid years, they would receive the same adjustment of $44.42.
Your prior chart, that looked at your current mix of employees based on their tenure, based on class tenure and all the other parameters, and that's actual number then, based on the current staffing?
Right, so that is a budgetary estimate. You know, HR data is not static. You constantly have turnover, promotions, changes. So this is an estimate as of, I think, a few weeks ago. But we would work with your finance team to get it right.
Thank you.
Jackie, I'm going to have you restate what you said with your microphone on just a moment ago, if you could please, about 12%.
So, looking back at slide number 21, where it lists the implementation cost by option, the finance department, along with the administration team, has, we really looked into each option, and we thought the one that was best suited to meet our needs to properly adjust parity like we saw fit would be the option for class parity, so class years. That means that they would get credit for time in current position. Does that make sense?
This doesn't give the 12% increase across the board to everybody.
This is an average of a 12% adjustment. Some will make less, some will make 12%, some might make more. It's an average. So we didn't want staff to think that everybody's getting a 12.1% increase. That is not the case.
Correct, that's the point, I think. So, Keesha, please.
Superintendent Collins, I just wanted to clarify, so in regards to the sort of class, sort of designation that you were looking for, were you guys also contemplating the impacts that this change, I guess, the impacts on benefits, how that might? Because I know that, and I'm not sure which slide it was, but it was initially, the presenter mentioned that that wasn't really contemplated, how that's going to impact it. So I didn't know if you had a chance to sort of figure that into everything as well.
The finance department has been working on incorporating fringe, we call it fringe benefits. So these are just base salary adjustments. So there is a significantly additional cost when you include fringe, especially FRS is 13% right at the top. So these figures are lovely, but they're not the actual figures.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to introduce.
Of course.
Just one additional question. If someone's coming in with five years of experience in high school, let's say, does that, we don't count that, it's when they start with us?
We do have a hiring salary schedule. There's not much of a range. It starts, currently, $50,000, and I believe that the high end, it's $55,000. So that's something that we would have to address. And finance has been asking us questions about that. How do we want to address that? We haven't firmed that up yet. That's something that we'll probably have prepared for you when we do the workshop, because that's going to be very important. We need to be able to recruit, and when you have a small spread, 50 to 55, even if it's 53.3 to 58, it's hard to recruit at any level, elementary, middle, or high. So it will, we do need to continue conversations about that.
And that is something that Evergreen will help you with as well. We'll provide you with a sample hiring grid that is contingent upon you selecting a salary scale for us to base that on. Widening those range spreads will help with that as well. So right now, you have a very narrow range for hiring. Widening those range spreads will help with that, and we can discuss how you want to bring those employees in, if you want to bring them in, no further than the midpoint, or how you want to do that. We can do that with you as well.
Have you addressed the current turnover that we're experiencing versus other? How does it compare with some of the other contemporaries? Turnover rate?
You know, I think that the state of education in general is in a unique situation currently with lots of turnover. I do think it is slowing somewhat, but I think you're not unique in that respect.
Okay, it's funny, because the driver, your highest rated driver was location, and your then-current condition, 90% are dissatisfied with salary. And they have the mobility capability from a location standpoint with a lot of employment capability around them, but yet they're not leaving. And they're dissatisfied, so I'm trying to square that in my mind.
You know, the salary is not the only driver of that. You know, a lot of employees do love the environment that is within Oasis Charter Schools. They love their coworkers, they love the school system that you have built here, but salary is also a driver.
And I think that's the thing that is going to be important, to preserve the love for what they're doing. And to not have salary as a major impact depleting or overcoming that. So I think that that's a challenge, really, to tell you the truth. So, thank you.
Thank you, continue, thank you.
All right. So other than implementing these three suggested pay plans, other recommendations that Evergreen would make to Oasis Charter Schools would be to continue to conduct small-scale salary surveys as needed. So as you have hard-to-fill positions or a lot of turnover, just making sure that you're maintaining a check on that market, adjusting pay grade assignments as necessary to make sure that you are remaining competitive within your local market. We would also suggest that you conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study, so as we're doing here, every three to five years, as budget allows and subject to market constraints. And then also, we would recommend that Oasis Charter Schools review and revise as appropriate your existing pay practice guidelines, so exactly what we were just talking about, how you bring new employees in, how employees will move through these new pay plans, and then how you will determine pay increases for employees that are being promoted. So just having more set compensation philosophies, going back to that additional clarification and transparency that your employees requested. Otherwise, next steps for Evergreen with Oasis Charter Schools, we have also been contracted to review your performance evaluation system. So Mrs. Collins did send that documentation over to me, so we'll start looking at that and make some recommendations for you in that respect. We'll also be updating your job descriptions using that information that we collected in the job assessment tool, so making sure those job descriptions reflect the actual roles and responsibilities of each position. And then we'll also be providing plan management training to your HR staff to make sure that they're comfortable with slotting new employees into pay plans or adding new positions as that's warranted. Any questions for me? Further questions?
Ms. Crumler, I want to thank you for that presentation. Very thoughtful. I would like to open it up for a little bit of conversation, because of course, I love dialogue, but I do want to remind everybody that we are going to have a workshop on this coming up soon, so we don't need to get too far in the weeds, because this workshop is where we can really get into the minutia and really discuss a lot of these things. But this is a good time to maybe open up for some general questions and things like that. Looking at some of the survey things, I think that, you know, nothing here is surprising to us. I think a lot of this is stuff that we already knew were problems, right? I think looking at it, we knew that pay compared to others in the system is really what the main driver was. Pay parity was number two, or number one, I think they go back and forth. And I think the other thing was no room for growth or incentives, right? I think those were always the three problems we knew that we faced within our system, right? But what I find that's exceptional is that we're not even at the 50th percentile compared to all of our other competitors, yet we outperform every single one of them. So I think that is a testament to our teachers that is unbelievable. So, I mean, it's sad that we're not at that 50th percentile, but then to turn around and know that our teachers are outperforming all the rest of them, that's, God. So, that being said, like I said, I'd like to open up for a little bit of dialogue, if anybody has some questions or comments. But again, we don't need to get too far in the weeds on it, but Mr. Crumler?
A general comment emphasizing what I was trying to bring up, the comparison of dissatisfaction with salary and compared to the seeming loss of a lot of attrition. I think that it's a testament to the system itself, the success of the system, the dedication to the system, and the commitment of those in charge of creating that system, and their capability to instill that commitment and eagerness to stay. You know, if you have so much propensity from an economic standpoint to leave, that probably wears thin after a period of time. But the point is, whatever we're doing right now, we want to encapsule and capture and continue with that type of mentality, because it's wonderful. That ecosystem is something that you can't duplicate, and we have it, let's not lose it, so.
Well, I'll state it, Mr. Crumler.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Etta Selly?
This is going to be for Superintendent Collins. Make sure, this is for Superintendent Collins. Right before, I know the workshop's coming up in a couple of weeks. Do you think that you might have a little bit of information in regards to what the fringe benefits might look like in some of these situations to kind of guide our discussions? So we know, when we're looking at these different designations, what the actual costs might ultimately end up being for the system?
We, do we have, Nicole?
We will have estimated numbers on that, confident to provide those two today. Like she stated, HR data is static, but what we're looking at is live data. So we are repulling everything as of today, looking at any vacancies, making sure we've taken into anything into account, as well as updating things like health benefits. When we move forward with payroll projections, we put in kind of like a basic health benefit and a cost, but we're taking a look at where's everybody currently stand right now, so we can get some really good values for you. So we should have all that by the 27.
Were there any questions around how long their days are beyond school time in terms of the additional work that needs to go into being successful? And that, so that needs to go, of course, but any insights there?
That happens in every teaching position. You've got your time on duty and then your extra time. No, it wasn't factored in. I don't, I wouldn't know how to factor that in. So, no, we haven't considered extra time, extended days, extended hours, no.
And think more about if that's one of the rationale for the retention issues, right? If that's, does that come up, or like, or some teachers leaving because of that issue, not necessarily, you know, the pay, but?
We do exit interviews whenever we can. Workload does come up, just because there's a significant workload on a teacher, according to what are, what we have to do for the state of Florida. We try to offset that workload by hiring interventionists and pair professionals. We do the best we can to offset that workload. Yes, yes, some do. The majority of the teachers that have left this year have left the state of Florida, have moved from Lee County to a county more inland in the state of Florida, where the cost of living is not as expensive, or they've just left the profession. Those are the biggies.
Thank you. An HR question that we'll probably get into in the workshop, but just high-level, which isn't really for you, it's for anyone here that is dealing with HR stuff. I'm assuming that some of our HR, like the job codes and everything that we have today are based on city, like the way that the city today does their job classifications? Maybe I'm wrong. How complicated will it be for us to move to what is recommended with these different pay bands, just from an HR perspective and the involvement of the city and the way they do things today with human resources? Do we know?
I think moving to these different pay bands is definitely doable. Are you talking about the classifications, like IO1, IO7? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming that we are tied in some way to the way the city is doing it today, just like we are with benefits, and so...
We really aren't. We really shouldn't be, frankly. We should be doing our own things, this is a different, this is a different system. So we're trying to establish our own.
Okay, so it sounds like it's not going to be problematic or complicated?
I don't believe so.
Good.
Another question. We had a 50% participation rate in the survey, roughly. Is that about average that you find as a participation rate, and is it a good enough subset of people to get a good idea and grasp on?
Yeah, so that is the minimum that we look for in terms of participation, and we're always happy, and we receive that 50% mark. So, you know, all employees that were included within the study had the opportunity to participate, so.
Any other questions? Yes, please.
Good evening. You mentioned a few times about the compression occurring between new hires and tenured employees. Can you just elaborate in more general terms what that means?
Sure. So compression between newly hired employees and more tenured employees means that you have, you're bringing new employees in, making close to, if not more than, someone who has already been with Oasis Charter Schools.
Thank you. I'm also curious on the percentage of participants in the study. Is there any reason, or is any way to extrapolate on that data for those that did not participate? Specifically, if they are more inclined to be net neutral, net positive responses, net negative?
I mean, I don't think there's any way to really say, but I think that, you know, at least the, I think the responses that you got are pretty typical of responses that we receive in our employee outreach phase. And typically, when we hear from employees that say, "We're not going to take the time to complete this," it's typically because of the additional workload that they have. They don't feel that they have They don't feel that they have additional time to complete the resources, or they don't feel comfortable sharing their feedback, so.
Thank you.
Member Katine, I think with the compression, a little historical background on it, is that when the governor changed the pay of the teachers to a mandatory minimum pay, we had to bring all teachers to a certain level. And when we did that, it didn't leave any room for us to pay or change the pay of our tenured teachers. And I think a lot of school systems were in the same position. So that's what we've been struggling with for many years, is that pay parity between our teachers that are tenured and the ones that weren't because we were forced to go to a certain level. So, yeah, we struggled with that in our budget for many years to be able to pay those teachers that have been with us for a long time, even though they deserved it.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for that informative presentation, Ms. Kremler. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
So just a reminder that on January 27th at nine o'clock in the green room, we'll have our next meeting, and we'll be prepared to share some much more ideal figures with you, more exact. This is, you know, finance has to go through every column, every, every figure to make sure that we're going to be able to budget appropriately for next year. And, and of course, as you already know, you know, what, what the figure is this year is, is one thing. We, our intention is to come up with a plan that the board will adopt for salaries, implement it as soon as the board approves it. Let's say if you approve it in February, maybe, you know, sometime in February. If you approve it in March, we'll implement it in March. So everybody will be bumped up this year to the new salary, starting salary that's been determined. Where else am I going with that? We, I just lost my train of thought. So that, so, so that is the, oh, I know what I was going to say. So the initial amount that it's going to cost us to get everybody to where we need to be is one thing, but you know, things compound from one year to the next, so we have to be very careful how we address the following year and the year after that because benefits increase, you know, all those costs will compound. So if we're looking at two point, 1.28 this year, it's going to be more next year. So finance has to fine-tooth comb what we're able to do and what we're able to maintain. Our idea is that we will bump everybody up nicely this year, get them where they need to be. Perhaps in the next year or two or three years from there, we're really going to have to evaluate what we're able to do. Can we float a 1% increase for those next couple of years? And then year number four, we come back with evergreen and do not, not as much of an extensive study, but a study again to see where we are in relationship with our peers and what we need to do at that point. We, we think it's going to have to be a very slow process, very mindful as to how we increase our teacher salaries, our staff salaries over time.
Agreed. There's a lot of uncertainty and unanswered questions on, you know, funding and sources of revenue that might be coming, so we have to take that into consideration. And as you said, things do compound, the, the cost of insurance and things do increase. So we can budget for them for this year, but they do increase year over year, so.
For example, we could be looking at a deficit year next year, according to Nicole Reitler. That could be a possibility.
Yep.
And when the state goes, when we have a deficit budget, it affects us. So we're going to take a very careful look at what we are, the maximum we're able to do and afford over time.
Maybe a related question is, and this came out again today in a number of studies, that we're, we're going to need to leverage AI to be much more productive, right? And I know your, your team has been looking at how to do that in, in, in support of teachers and support of other areas, right? Is that progressing, your, the work that's been done, being done in this district about how you can, you're leveraging AI?
I know what we've done as far as leveraging AI. We, we are working on, especially at 17. If that's what you're asking.
More from a school, more, more from an operations perspective?
Not that long yet.
Not yet, okay.
Not yet.
All right, that's going to bring us to item 10, new business. We have 10A, a request for approval of the Oasis Charter School Employee Classification and Compensation Workshop, which will be scheduled for Monday, January 27th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so we will have that on Monday, January 27th, 2025. And that's going to be here in City Hall. Am I correct at that?
Correct.
Green room?
Nine.
Okay. Great. That brings us to item B, a request for approval for the Oasis Sports Complex Joint Workshop with City Council, scheduled for February 19th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
We have a second?
All right.
Looks like we have motions and seconds flying. I love it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just for clarification, that time is 3:30 PM.
Excited about that as well. Lots of good stuff progressing.
I think Ms. Michaels is more hungry than I am.
She's been my right, she's been my right-hand.
Hungry for the sports complex.
That's it, yeah. She's been my right-hand secretary for a long time. That brings us to our superintendent's report. Ms. Collins, please.
I have no report for this evening, thank you.
No report tonight, short, sweet. Going to bring us to our interim assistant city manager's report, Mr. Mason.
Caught you off-guard, Mason. Good evening, Mark Mason, Assistant City Manager. We have no report. Everything seems to be working out just fine so far. Staff is working very hard diligently to see what we're going to do with this evergreen report, and we'll, well, I won't be there on the 27th, unfortunately, I have other plans, but my staff will be there, ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
I thought you associate the goodness of the developments with the new council person on the board. No? I'm teasing you, my friend.
I'm sorry, what?
I thought you'd associate the good developments that are occurring with the new council person that's the liaison, so.
Okay, as soon as I, I'll, I'll go back and, and check those out. And I'll come back up and report on it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
That's going to bring us to our council member report. Mr. Kilrain, do you have anything exciting for us tonight?
Yeah, sure, just, just maybe two things. One is that with respect to the capital project for the school and the P3, it was discussed generally with council, and I think that one of the, the factors that wasn't discussed in our, in the presentation here is picking up the operating cost side of that. And it has to be brought forward with, with that in hand, so almost a pro-pharma basis to cover the operating cost plus the capitalization. The, the easy part might be raising the capital, although that's a challenge in itself, but certainly making sure that it's sustainable throughout, based on the revenue generation and the expense portion of it, is very important. So we're, we're going to be talking more about that, I think, in our budget workshops and collectively, as we all meet together in those budget workshops. So that, that's very important. And I, I think that probably second is, along with the lines of the, the compensation and moving it forward on a step basis throughout the years, accompanying that, and also in order to get support for any type of new facility we might want. I think that we have to start marketing and communicating that we are much different than a private charter school. I think the general public belief is that, you know, they, they peg us as a private charter school. We are part of the city, and we are one of the jewels of the city, and we have to start communicating that way long-term so that we establish within the public a better understanding of how well this is performing for the city and the value it brings to the city in retention and also attracting people to live here. And that's, that's basic. I mean, is, we are part of the city, and the city is part of us, and it's no we, they. And I think that's very important. So I think we need to really start thinking a little bit more about a more rigorous marketing program and just touting some of the capabilities that we're, we're producing with this goal. So, thank you, that's, that's my report. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. I, I shout that from the rooftops every chance I get, that we were created by the city, for the city, for the purposes of the city. So, yeah, there was a disconnect at some time, but I've tried, you know, very hard to close that gap, and I completely agree that we, we are city-run and, and, yeah, I completely agree. And I, I think that we are starting to turn that corner as well with, I think the city is, our, our citizens in the community are starting to see the value in us. And it took us many years to get to that point, but I really do, I started to hear it in the community, I, I see it at the games, you know, people see me with an Oasis shirt out there and they want to talk to me now, and they talk about how, all the good things that they're hearing about us. So, yeah, I, I think we're getting there, and I hear what you're saying, and we got to give it that extra push, and, yeah, I completely agree.
It's pretty hard to hide a 100% graduation rate, too.
Yeah, you can't hide that, right? Thank you for your report, sir. That brings us over to my report. So as far as being repositioned as chair, just had something brief to say. So just want to say that I'm deeply humbled, honored by the board's vote and confidence in choosing me to serve as Chair of the Board for a second term. I do appreciate that. This role is both a privilege and a responsibility. I'm grateful for the trust that you place in me. As we move forward, I'm committed to fostering a collaboration with the city, our dedicated staff and the entire community to ensure that Oasis continues to thrive as a beacon of excellence, as we've always been. Together, I'm confident that we can build upon our successes, address our challenges, and create the best possible environment for our students, staff, and families. So thank you for this opportunity to serve. I look forward to working alongside each and every one of you on the board, along with the staff and administration, for all the great things still yet to come for Oasis. So thank you for your trust that you put in me. I do appreciate it. That being said, I also want to congratulate Ms. Michaels on becoming my Chair. It's great to be able to lean on you, and you bring great value to the board as well, so I do appreciate that. Thirdly, I would like to welcome our new member, Mr. Santos. We're honored to have you as part of our board. You come to us with a great amount of wealth, I know, in finance, as well as you're a pillar in the community. You do a lot of stuff for nonprofit. I've heard great things about you, followed you a little bit as well. So I really look forward to seeing all the things that you, the value that you can bring to the board and the things that you can bring, and I look forward to seeing what your superpower is and what you, you'll bring to this board and the changes that you'll make, so.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you, and welcome.
And that is it for my report. We're going to go on to the foundation report. I don't think I saw Gary, so Ms. Hoagland, are you going to give us our report today?
Yes, I will, thank you. Jen Hoagland, Foundation Treasurer. Gary has many hats. He's working the Oasis High Basketball Game this evening, so. So just a brief update, we, we had our rally on the boards, our cornhole tournament over on Saturday, and it was wonderful. We thank everyone who came out. We had teachers playing, husbands playing, administration there, and also playing. You, Chair, were there with your son. He was volunteering. It was wonderful to see our community out. We had kids from the school also out. It was a great day. The rain stopped early, and it was a nice, cool afternoon for everyone to play. So thank you for everyone who had come out and supported us and donated baskets and were our sponsors and played in our tournament and, and torched, of course, for hosting for us. And I think we will definitely be doing it again.
Ms. Hoagland, can you give us an idea of how much money did you raise?
We still have some sponsorship things still to do, but it should be roughly in upwards of maybe eight to 10,000 for the day.
Okay.
So for, for smaller effort, it, it was, it was a really great day. I mean, not quite as much as normally our golf tournaments are, which takes a tremendous more work. But because we are having the gala, which we, we hope to have a wonderful turnout and a much higher level of profit, God willing, hopefully that'll kind of, you know, pick up where we left off last year.
Thank you.
Our party, our putt-putt party for our family fun event is coming up on February 28th at Tropical Breeze. We've done that for the past couple of years. It's always a wonderful turnout. We have performances from all the theater groups because they're getting ready to put on their shows in the spring, so please come out and join us on the 28th at Tropical Breeze. I believe that's always a Friday night. And then we are now in full force for our gala. It is going to be at the Westin here in Cape Coral on March the 29th. We are reaching out to anyone and everyone to either help or sponsor. Community support is going to be key, not just from our own Oasis system, but the community at large. So we are hoping to reach out to the community as well as just our own school system. So if, and if everyone can spread the word, our flyers, the QR code to buy the tickets and for volunteering or anything else that we have available will be going up shortly. We are finalizing that flyer, and I believe it is going to be live on our website, which is capecharterfoundation.org or capecharterfoundation.com, either one.
Ms. Hoagland, we'd like to set up a meeting with you, the administration team?
Okay.
And myself, and the board, or whoever's the chairperson of the event, so that we can help and work together and make sure that this is a, this is a, this is a big undertaking?
Yeah.
And we'd like to be a part of that?
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
With you.
Okay, I will certainly reach out to the team.
That'd be great, thank you.
And unless anybody has any other questions, I think that's, I think that's all.
Comment? As always, the foundation is an integral part of the school, and they do amazing work for us, all on volunteer hours, as we all understand, right? Cornhole tournament was great. I did have a lot of fun when I was there, so thank you. Yeah, maybe we didn't raise a million dollars, but I think the cost-benefit was great because it doesn't cost a lot of money to put on a cornhole tournament as it might for a golf tournament, right? There's not as much cost involved there.
Correct.
So I think that it was, the cost-benefit was there for sure. As far as galas go, yeah, it's probably a huge undertaking. And, yeah, it's, it's probably not going to maybe in the first couple of years make a million dollars, but those are things that take time. And once, you know, the community starts getting involved and they start hearing about it and it really catches on, that's when things really start happening with galas, I think. So, yeah, I think that'll be, it'll be really neat, so. Ms. Michael?
A couple of plugs really quick on the putt-putt. I've mentioned this to a few folks, but I do think we should auction off more parking spots than we've done in the past because that's a really high-demand auction item there, and I think it's only been parking spots one through five, and so maybe it can be the whole front row, which is one through seven or eight. I don't know exactly what it is. Yeah, so just, you know, I'm just throwing that out there again because I think that's a high-ticket item at that. And that's a lot of fun for anyone to come out. And then on the gala, do you, can we, can it be a topic at a city council meeting?
Sure.
To get, yeah, I think it would be helpful?
Sure.
For the council to encourage folks and to?
Sure, absolutely. I could bring it up in my report.
A lot more public, I think, viewing of those meetings.
And I can have our flyer emailed also to all the council and our board, so they have it as well. That has all the details as well.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Any other comments? That brings us along to final board comments. We'll start down here. Ma'am?
Following along with what Councilmember Kilrain mentioned about how we need to really show the city how much we are an integral part of the city, how we were, I believe you said, designed by the city, for the city. I would like to circle back to how we can boost engagement, whether that's in ad hoc committee. I'm, you'll have to guide me on how that goes.
Sure.
But I would like to move forward with trying to boost engagement.
Yeah, we've, we've certainly tried lots of different committees. Committees are difficult with term limits and such, and they kind of have a
Committees are difficult with term limits and such, and they kind of ebb and flow, but if there's a committee or a position that you're thinking of, certainly this is the time to bring it up, then we can discuss it at the next meeting of a possible committee position, and a chair of said committees...
Can I interrupt for a second? Kathleen Paul Evans is in charge of our communication committee? What do we call it?
Community engagement.
The community involvement. She's already working on that, and I think she'd be a good contact for you, because she's got some great ideas already. And I also wanted to bring attention to our new government member, Mr. Santos, who, that is his forte, and I think, once we let him speak, he's going to have some great ideas about how we can be more community-involved and things like that, engaged in different organizations. So, we've got some things going already in the fire. I just need to point you in the right directions.
Thank you.
Is that so?
Yes. First off, I'd like to say welcome to Mr. Santos. I don't think I had a chance to formally greet you when I came in, but I, and I also wanted to say to Superintendent Collins and your team and Evergreen, thank you so much for bringing all of this information to us. We have really been wanting to see some real progress to address the staff pay, because we know, we know it's an issue. But I've also been hearing you loud and clear, and I really appreciate how you've been guiding us in terms of saying, "Hey, this is probably going to be a better cost option," because that's going to be very important. We definitely want to boost salaries, but for the love of God, we don't want to overpromise either. So, I really appreciate being guided and having that information, so that we can not just do a good decision today, but something that's going to be long-term, and I really like what you were talking about, what's sustainable, and us looking in that direction. So, thank you and all of your team for gathering this information, and I'm so looking forward to this workshop, and that information is going to help us make the best decision here, I think. Thank you.
Dr. Manaya?
First off, congratulations to our 2025 Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
You're, I mean, it is, it is, it is work, it's dedication, it's insight. You provide a lot of wisdom for us and guide us, so sincerely thank you for taking that on this year. And to our new board member, welcome. We look forward to working with you, and it is a fun board. Please feel free to ask as many questions as you have, because the answers that you'll get back are just incredible, so I look forward to your assistance, and yeah, I look forward to going to the gala, so, great.
Ms. Michaels?
I just want to thank our friends in the finance department, Mr. Mason and team, for all the hard work that they have been doing and that they are going to be doing on this compensation study. We genuinely appreciate your partnership and the amount of work that you put in on this, because your salary increases are very important, so thank you.
Member Kilrain?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Mr. Santos?
Just want to say thank you guys for being so welcoming to me today, and I can't wait to just roll up my sleeves and get to work on letting people know what amazing things the school system is doing. I think that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to let everybody know what we're doing, and maybe, you know, little tips and tricks on how we can raise some funding and, you know, connect with some businesses in the community to, you know, really make this thing where we want it to be over the next 20, 30 years, whatever the timeframe is, so just excited to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Hoagland?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. How about our parent reps? Anything to say tonight? So, I've always said this, dialogue, I think it's very important, I think it's really what makes the board tick. I think it's what makes our listeners out there informed. I think that I've watched a lot of boards, I've watched a lot of other councils in other places and other boards. Sometimes they don't speak, because they're afraid to speak, because they think that maybe they should already know the answer, and they're ill-informed. That's just not the case. If you have a question, there's probably other people that have the same question, and, you know, there's a learning curve to this board for sure. There's many, many years of information that you got to catch up to. So, if you have questions, please do not be afraid or think that you should already know the answer, because you probably shouldn't know the answer. There's 20 years of information up here. So, please don't ever feel afraid to speak, especially, like I said, always with the parent reps, we would love to hear from you always, so please don't feel that you can't speak. Your voices are just as important as ours. In fact, sometimes more important, because you have your finger on the pulse of the parents out there as well. So, like I said, dialogue, dialogue, dialogue. I love to hear it. So, that being said, again, we do thank Evergreen. I think that, as we discussed earlier, prudence is definitely where we need to be, because, yes, we want to pay our teachers. They deserve every bit of what we can pay them, plus some, because what they do is absolutely amazing. It's a labor of love, and they do not get paid enough for what they do, and I think everybody knows that and can agree with it throughout the country. And we would love to pay them all as much as we possibly can. I think that we will try to get them as much as we possibly can. That is prudent and that is sustainable for our system, and I look forward to that workshop as well. So, that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Show them.
Second?
Second.
Meeting is, well, adjourned. Our next meeting is going to take place here on February 11th, 2025, at 5:00. Motion to adjourn? Adjourned.